Thank you, Susan. All right. Hello, everybody. Happy New Year. Welcome to our first meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. This is a work session as part of our capital improvement plan budget process. Our first order of business is the pledge to the flag. Please rise and join us. And our land acknowledgement statement. The town of South Kingstown pays homage to the indigenous people and land on which the town is now located. Let this acknowledgement serve as a reminder of our ongoing efforts to recognize, honor, reconcile, and partner with the Narragansett Tribe, whose land and water we benefit from today. Now, item two on the agenda is a discussion regarding the capital improvement program, FY 2022, 2023 through FY 2027, 2028. And we'll begin with item A, the budget message.
Good evening. Tonight is the first of two work sessions for the council for the town to present the 2223 to 2728 capital improvement program. We'll start with a brief explanation of the capital budget process for the benefit of the public and those who have not been through this before. And we'll also add some context related to the town's financial condition. And then we'll get into the proposed municipal capital budget program for the fiscal year 2223. Tomorrow evening, the second work session will focus on the school department's proposed capital improvement program, and we will have representatives from the school department here to present that to council this evening. Just briefly, first, we have, you know, what is a capital improvement program? Obviously, the council is aware, this council has been through the process, but just to review it for the benefit of all, let me step back a little bit. The comprehensive budget document is on the town website at www.southkingstownri.com. So if the public would like to reference the entire document, it is there for them to see. Before we present the budget and the projects for tonight, just the quick explanation of the capital improvement program. It's basically a living document. It's reevaluated annually and updated annually and presented as a financial plan. And it includes quite a bit of detail with regard to costs associated with infrastructure projects that are important to the town and that take priority upon reassessment of the capital program. The first year of the capital budget, it's a six-year program. The first year is the capital budget, and that's incorporated into the upcoming operating budget for fiscal year 2223. Then the subsequent five years reflect a plan based on the assessment of our department heads and the town administration that projects out what the future holds and where the priorities lie and how the funding is to be proposed for making sure that these projects are in the pipeline and planned for the future. Again, the development of the CIP is a process that involves every department head and division head in terms of working together to develop a capital budget that really identifies the priorities and the needs of the town related to the town's infrastructure. There's also some boards and commissions that are involved with the process as well that review the plans, the pay-as-you-go plans, to get their input for the long-term plan. And the projects are ranked. They're ranked by priority, and of course, health and safety tops that ranking, but there are other factors that play into how a project is ranked: funding availability, infrastructure needs, buildings, roads, parks. And some of these compete against one another, and we really try to be creative in not only seeking funding through the operating budget and long-term plan of municipal tax dollars, but alternative funds as well, so that we're able, in some cases, to speed up a process for a project if the funding is there from other sources. And essentially, the projects get ranked, and what you see tonight reflects the priorities and the long-term plan as the department heads and the town administration see it. As I mentioned, funding sources are definitely important here, and you can see the number of different sources that the town utilizes in order to fund our capital projects. General obligation bonds are typically the lion's share of the funding for major projects. We also have real estate conveyance fees that goes towards these funding, the funds for capital projects. Also important to note that some of our projects are self-funded through our enterprise programs and/or separate funds like the Neighborhood Guild, and those do not impact the tax rate. Again, I will stress that the staff is also challenged to look for alternative funding sources in the way of grants, nonprofit grants, state and federal grants, in order to help fund programs that may not be at the top of the priority list, but may meet some qualifications of specific grants that are out there. So this slide reflects the single-year capital improvement annual funding element as compared with the 2122, the current year. And you will see that there are a number of categories, the major one being our general fund category at the top there. That is the municipal general fund, and you'll see that there is a $1.845 million proposed budget for FY 2223, which is $35,800 increase over the current fiscal year. That represents about a 1.9% increase. You'll see the senior services fund is proposing an additional $10,000 over the current year. The guild fund has been reduced. That simply reflects expenditures that have already been made and that were budgeted in the current year, and that $1 million of that fund is through bond, which is paid through the guild interest income. And then we have our water and wastewater enterprise funds, and you'll notice that there is a significant increase in the water enterprise fund by $150,000 for FY 2223, and a modest $23,000 increase for wastewater. Again, those are self-funded, those two utility funds. And then the school fund, you'll hear more about tomorrow evening when the school department presents their budget. What you see in this slide represents the six-year program, and the adopted 2122 program shows what our budget is for the six-year term, $114,496,647. And our proposed six-year plan is $121,422,85. That would be the six-year plan beginning in 2223. You'll see an overall increase in the six-year program of $6.9 million. You'll notice that's primarily reflected in the school program, which will be, again, will be detailed tomorrow evening by the school department. You will notice in the leisure services program, there is a $702,000 increase, and a portion of that is due to the municipal bonding and the projects that are coming up. And I believe, and Zach, I'm going to ask you to remind me on this one, I think this is also due to some of the Harbor Master capital program budget being rolled onto leisure services and taken out of the police department capital budget. That shows you the six-year plan in comparison to the current years. And this chart reflects the town's debt level if the town did not take on any more debt over the next six years. So you're looking at 2223 based on where we're at now with our existing debt level. And I will ask the finance director to jump in if I'm incorrect in my statements here. But you'll see a significant decrease over the six-year term as we pay down the municipal debt, and this is only if no other debt is taken on between now and 2027, 2028. So we'd be down in the $4.9 million range by FY 2728. From another perspective, this chart reflects the town's debt per capita over the next six years, assuming the six-year program that is presented in this plan moves forward. Again, you'll see here a spike in 2425. We show in the six-year plan the school funding, which is, assuming there's a school project of some sort, we wanted to make sure that that funding was reflected in the long-term plan for this capital program. And that's what you're seeing in this chart. This table, it may be a bit difficult to read. Again, this is the outstanding debt level as it exists today. Again, if you look at the bottom line of the general fund debt, you will see the decrease from June 30, 2022 of $10,111,000 over the six-year term down to $4.9 million. This is a, reflects what you saw in the bar graph, two charts before. But you will notice, you'll see the town debt and the bonds associated with it. I think they go back to 2012. You'll see the rec center bond is noted in here. There are some recreation playfield bonds that I believe are still being paid off. And then you'll also notice the school debt and the school bonds that date back to 2010. This table shows the town's future debt schedule, and that is based on this program. So all future debt service. You'll see the Neighborhood Guild renovations is noted in here. That's a $1 million bond. You'll see the municipal bond program that includes the bonding that we have, that the council just approved for the road improvements, for the communication program, and the recreation programs. You'll see that in this table as well. And then you'll also see that the school building improvements, the major funding is also represented here in this future debt service cost schedule. So you can get an idea of what the property tax requirement would be over the next six years if all of this debt were assumed. This is an illustration of the property tax as it relates to debt service. So if, assuming an average house assessment in 2223 is $405,384, 36 cents of the total tax rate would be applied to debt service. If we look out to year six in 2728, you will see that 72 cents would be applied to debt service. That would be if we assumed all of that bonded debt that was shown in the previous This slide, I believe, was also presented on the December 20 meeting, but it gives you a sense of the future bond schedule. And as the council is aware, the municipal bond has been authorized to be advertised for sale. That's in process, and that reflects the projects that we've mentioned before, the road and bridge improvements, the radio project, recreation improvements like the boat ramp in Old Mountain Field, and the town beach, and of course, the Neighborhood Guild bond as well. And then you'll see the two funding sources for the school building improvements, assuming there is a project that's coming down the pike within the next six years, with total new debt of $86,160,000. Fair share development fees. This is another revenue source that allows the town to contribute funds for park development, open space. There's also the educational facilities fees, which that program had been suspended in 2017, in part to the decrease in the student enrollment. If the, in the future, if there is a building project, that is something that will likely need to be considered in future years for re-establishing a fair share fee for educational And this table reflects the calculation for fair share development fees. These are fees that are charged to developers in order to put funds towards recreational facilities to meet the needs of a growing community. If there are more homes built, there brings more residents to town. And this shows in FY 2122 what the proposed fees are for developers. If there's a single household, $3,763. A two-bedroom or less unit, $2,940. And then for 2223, it actually goes down a bit because the per-person occupied household unit average goes down a bit. So you'll see that reflected here, goes down about less than $100. And these will remain in place. The open space acquisition program, this really is for, basically for the council and the public to see how the open space acquisition program has benefited the town. It's been in place for 23 years. There have been 36 projects that the town has contributed to, over $8 million towards. And there's a total of 1,621 acres that has been protected as open space with that funding. You'll also see the breakout, this is in the CIP document as well, the breakout over the years of the various organizations that have protected open space. The town of South Kingstown is three from the bottom, you'll see there, and currently owns 1,004, almost 1,005 acres of open space, which overall, we have a total of 32.6% of land area in town that is classified as open space. Okay. So that gives you some context and frame of reference for where the town is at, particularly with long-term debt. The CIP document has much greater detail in terms of the statistical details of the town in relation to other communities. But what I'd like to do now is have our department heads come up and actually present the pay-as-you-go portion of the CIP for FY 2223. And we'll start with Parks and Recreation, and that section is on tab five, page two it begins, and we'll have Rex come up and he'll run through the detail of the program.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here tonight. So the Parks and Recreation Improvement Program, a total of $135,000, is basically its maintenance, its replacement of worn-out items.
Rex, can I just ask you to bring that microphone closer?
Yes. So it's basically, it's maintenance items in the parks, no real new initiatives. Let's start out, the first item that we're requesting is for Fagan Park. It's basically a replacement of the picnic tables that have seen some vandalism over the years and replacement of the drinking fountain. As we do with all of our projects, we try to utilize in-house staff. We have very talented staff, and we take on portions of projects to be able to save money when we can do that, especially if we can do them in the offseason when we're not, you know, straight out doing ball fields and mowing and things like that. Next project is probably our, what we feel is the most important of all of our projects and the most need, is Old Mountain Field. And the biggest portion of this project is replacement of the restroom and concession building. We have recently applied for a $400,000 DEM grant, which would really kind of be the icing on the cake for this whole project. Overall, in addition to replacing the restroom concession area, we'd like to improve the parking and traffic flow within the park, and then also create some ADA compliant pathways so that we can have wheelchair access throughout the entire park. Ideally, we'd like to create a one-way traffic pattern in there. If you've ever been in there on a busy night and seen the traffic flow, you'll kind of understand how tight it can be in there. Next project is the town beach. We typically budget about, we request about $10,000 every year for erosion protection, beach replenishment, sand replenishment, and any other major improvements, unexpected improvements that we may need over the course of the year. The next project is, it's a multi-year funded project. This is for the replacement of the Tucker Town play structure. Several years ago, we did replace a number of the decks and slides in there that were worn out, but we're getting to the point where the structure, portions of the structure are going to need to be replaced. They're outdated, and we can only replace components for so many years, and it gets to the point where we've got to come in and replace the entire structure itself. So this is a multi-year funded project, and we'll have, at the end, after this portion of the funding, we'll have $80,000 to be able to put in new structure there. The tennis and tennis court resurfacing project for Tucker Town Park, we rotate resurfacing of our courts every year. We usually do two to three courts every year. It's about a seven-to-10-year rotation. These courts have seen significant cracking, and depending on the use of the courts at different parks, the paint surfacing wears off. So it's about a seven-to-10-year life cycle on track repair and resurfacing, restriping. Next project is West Kingston Park. We've recently converted those into combination pickleball and tennis courts. We did restripe them, but we also, there we have significant cracking that needs to be repaired, and then we'll restripe those as dual-purpose courts again. We've got some of those portable pickleball nets on wheels, so people can play tennis or pickleball out there. So that's working out really well. And then for equipment, we have replacement of our one-ton stakebody truck. This basically is, serves the purpose of transporting maintenance equipment around. It tows one of our larger trailers with mowers. It serves as our leaf collection truck. We use it for woodchips, things like that. And so that truck is, has over 63,000 miles, and it's really kind of at the end of its useful life. It gets to the point where repairs start costing more, and we have a lot of downtime. So we're getting to that point with this truck, and it's time to replace it. Our next item is the 2013 4O mower. This is one of our workhorses, I would say, for mowing our large turf areas. It's got three decks, and it can mow 12 feet at a time. So we have two of these mowers and really go five days a week, eight hours a day mowing athletic fields. And this has, we like to say, we like to turn them over anywhere from about 1,600 to 2,000 hours, and this one has over 2,000 hours on it. And finally is the leaf collection vacuum. This has really helped us become very efficient with our fall and spring cleanups of leaves and things in the parks. And this hooks on to the other, one of the other trucks, the stakebody truck. This unit's over seven years old now, and really, seven years is about the average life cycle of one of these. So we're starting to have them to replace mechanical equipment on there, and it's time to replace that also.
Does anyone have any questions for Rex regarding the Parks and Recreation Pay-Go program?
I just have one question as to whether anyone has explored electric vehicles at all. Do we move towards...
We are actually looking into start, some of the smaller equipment to going electric. We have a couple of electric blowers now, leaf blowers. I'm researching electric trimmers, things like that. So we're starting smaller, but I don't think for these vehicles, we're to the point where electric vehicles would be satisfactory for what we do. We may be there someday. I'm also doing some research even on the mowers, maybe at some point. I would love to do that, starting to convert over to electric for some of that equipment.
I'd like to see us at least explore any opportunity to...
Yeah. The smaller equipment, now, a lot of the trucks have the charging stations right on the trucks, so they can charge from park to park when they're transporting equipment. So I think that'll be a good start if we can go electric with some of the smaller equipment.
Rex, I got a question for you in regard to the $50,000 allocated in fiscal year 2223 for the restroom concession building replacement at Old Mountain Field.
Yep.
Will that $50,000 take care of the entire replacement listed here in that fiscal year, or is there more money in use?
No. We're hope, especially after the $400,000 DEM grant, we're looking at a little over $800,000 that we'll have for the entire project, which will include parking improvements, pathway, and restroom.
So can you walk me through that? You said a $400,000 grant, also $50,000 here, and then an additional 50, so $500,000 total cost?
So we have other prior year funding for this also.
Okay, understood.
Yep.
Thank you.
So just to add on to that, so in the document, there is a long, under the long-term plan, Old Mountain Field shows the funding, and one is the municipal bond funding, another is American Rescue Plan funds, seeking the DEM grant. There's multiple funds to try to put together enough in order to do the full project at once, to include the concession and restroom building, to include the lot redesign, to include the walkways. Because as they've looked at this project, it has, to do one without really looking at the rest, the more funding to be able to do it comprehensively makes the most sense. So they're hopeful for the DEM grant.
And all the improvement replacements that will take place at Old Mountain Field should be done by the end of fiscal year 23? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's our hope.
Awesome.
Yeah.
I just have a question about the dump truck.
Yes.
So it's, doesn't have a lot of miles on it. It's only has 63,000, but it's 2013. So could you just explain a little bit more about why it's important to replace it? Because I know it sounds old, but it doesn't seem like it has a lot of use.
Yeah. So when you think of mileage on a vehicle, you think, all right, a car can go 100-plus-thousand miles before you have to replace it. These trucks are towing a trailer that's over 14,000 pounds, but when it's loaded up, plus the equipment in the truck itself, and it's going, it's driving four or five miles at a time from park to park. So 61,000 miles on a vehicle like that is more like 120,000 miles on your car.
Because it's...
Very, very hard miles. So that's, and then what we see is usually around the 60,000, 70,000 mile mark is, all right, we start having to replace transmissions, things like that, you know, to the tune of $5,000, $6,000, $7,000.
Okay. So the mileage is really, because it's a lot of in-town mileage, it's harder on the truck than if it was just traveling from here to Boston?
If those, if it wasn't towing a trailer all the time, then that would, you know, I would say, you know, another 10, 15, 20,000 miles easily on that vehicle, but it really, that puts a lot of wear and tear on those trucks.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Good question for you, Rex.
Sure.
As to the way you go about identifying which courts, basketball courts, tennis courts or courts alike, need resurfacing, what, what's the approach you use there?
Well, the approach is, is basically based on the amount of use it gets and, and how quickly, like, I'll give you an example, that, say the tennis court or basketball court at Green Hill Park, they don't get as much use. So, the surfacing will last a little bit longer, whereas say, Old Mountain Field, Village Green, those, you know, the, the surfacing wears off so much quicker. And I, it also, some of the courts seem to, the, whether they, when they were constructed, the subsurface is, doesn't promote as much cracking of the asphalt. So, I really, every year, I kind of do a reassessment. I go around and say, all right, which courts is the surfacing worn off and which are cracked the worst? And usually it's, it's anywhere from about a seven to a 10-year cycle. Some of them, the, the ones that have a lot more use and more cracking, it's about a seven-year cycle. Some of them can go 10 or more years. But it's usually every year a reassessment of all the courts and then pick and choose which ones are the worst and, and the most need.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're ready for John Schock for Public Services. Thanks, Rex.
Good evening.
Evening.
Okay, so we'll talk about the non-utility general fund improvements. And that's kind of a snapshot of all the elements, arterial roads, the road programs, drainage, bridge, stormwater, and then the highway facility. So, for the upcoming year, we have Warden's Pond Road, a number of years ago, we did the first phase. This is the second phase from ministerial to, I guess, Tucker Town Village, for lack of better words. We have Green Hill Beach Road from Schoolhouse to Post Road. And with these projects, what we do is we reclaim down to the subbase and then reshape, regrade, compact, two and a half inches of binder asphalt, which has a larger aggregate and then an inch and a half of finished course. And just back up just a little bit, our road program, I kind of equate it to like triage in the emergency room, who's bleeding the worst, gets the most attention. That's kind of how we have mapped out our, our road improvement program for the last 20 years, I think successfully. For example, this year, we've got Old North Road from 138 to Stony Fort. At the next council meeting, we'll have a recommendation on that road for some engineering work because we're going to get some drainage work done to get the water off the road. And we're hoping to complete that while URI is out this summer and have it done before. So, TMDLs, I can give you the quick primer, total maximum daily loads. These are levels that are promulgated by DEM and essentially what it says is the amount of pollutant loading that's allowable in a water body, for that water body is to meet water quality standards, which is fishable, swimmable. We just recently completed TMDL improvements in Narrow River. If the council recalls, we awarded a contract for Green Hill Pond. That study is, not loud enough, that study is underway right now for Green Hill Pond. Once the study is done, we'll have some public outreach and then get some design work done for some stormwater BMPs and then we'll be prepared to construct those. And it, it's, it takes a little bit of time between the study. We want to make sure when we make these stormwater improvements, we're getting the ones completed with the, the most amount of removals at the least amount of cost, so we get better bang for our buck. So, it, by the time we start to award an engineering contract to get to construction, it's, it's a couple of year project.
Excuse me, John?
Yep.
Could you move your microphone closer?
Closer, yeah.
Apparently, people who are viewing cannot hear you.
And we have a number of other TMDLs. Again, we started with Now River, around the Green Hill, Upper Point Judith Pond's another one, Sagatucket River, Indian Run Brook, 100 Acre Pond. So, we've got a number, we'll, we'll be doing TMDL and stormwater improvements for the next 20 years. Yep, we're good. So, just as an update on the, the sheet pile wall down in Mattoonik, as you may recall, we awarded the contract to New England Bridge and Building. They're in the shot middle, submittal process right now. The sheet piles have been ordered. It's a rather long lead time. We're hoping to get the sheet piles on site probably sometime late January, early February and get the sheet piles driven before the summer months. We will demobilize from Memorial Day to Labor Day. We don't want to be down there and then it's obviously too busy. And we'll try to get back in the fall to finish up the cast-in-place concrete cap and the armor stone that goes seaward of the steel sheet pile. So, with all luck, we'll probably be done in the spring of 2023. And then Phase One, and what's going to be required for Phase Two, every year we have to do sand replenishment is required by the ascent. We get that done before Memorial Day of each year. So, when we get Phase Two done, we'll have to do the same thing and do sand replenishment. Okay, on to the highway division. We've got a number of vehicles scheduled for replacement. So, we've got two, what we consider light dump trucks and these, again, have relatively low mileage. The problem we have with our dump truck fleet is they're primarily used for winter storm and sanding. So, the sand-salt mixture is pretty corrosive. We, when we get a new truck in, we treat the undercarriage with like a Cosmoline product to try to preserve the brake lines, a few lines, but it's still a very corrosive material. And we do a post-storm wash down after each storm to try to wash off the sand, but it, it is a very corrosive environment, so hence the need to, to replace them on a regular basis. The larger dump trucks, we've gone to a stainless steel body, which has been a big help. It's been a vast improvement over the carbon steel. This will have a, a carbon steel body with a, with a drop-in stainless steel sander. And this is the first, the smaller dump truck. It's a two-year funding cycle for that vehicle. The second vehicle is we have two large tandem axle dump trucks. Those vehicles are assigned to the areas of town that we have drifting primarily up in the, in the Oskar Pog dugaway bridge area and down in Mattoonik where we have snowdrifts. We need that bigger vehicle to be able to push those drifts out of the way. And this is the third year of a three-year funding cycle for that vehicle. Pickup truck, council may recall, we had this vehicle in last year's budget. We reevaluated it at the time and felt we could get another year out of it and we're proposing to replace that vehicle again this upcoming year. And again, we'll reevaluate. If we still feel that vehicle is still good, we'll push it back another year. We've got a skid steer, which is a pretty versatile piece of equipment, has multitude of attachments that we have for it. We do, use everything from like unloading pallets to, you know, when we need to help out with the, you know, loading the trucks with salt and sand. We also use, that's one of our primary pieces of equipment. We've got a gravel for it for debris management. We have tree storms, debris, to be able to pick up the, the tree debris. And that's, that's now scheduled for replacement. Roadside mowers, we used to have three. We, we ended up cutting back to two a number of years ago. Would be nice to get back to three, but at the present time, we're still staying with two roadside mowers and that manages those areas of town where people don't mow down at the edge of road. I'd like to mow it more than we do. Sometimes you probably see it almost gets to be a hayfield before we get out there. But with two, two tractors and the amount of roads that we have, we try to do the best we can. And again, that one's got 4,200 hours on it and that's scheduled for replacement as well. The next item is a roller, although the pictures of a, oh, okay, I got a, I've got a skid steer in my picture, that's been corrected. So, we have a roller, a vibratory roller, so when we're out doing any utility patch repairs or potholes that are bigger than something small that we need to compact, we have a vibratory roller. That, the one we have now is currently not manufactured anymore. We can't get any parts for it. So, and again, it's, it's a 1999, so we've got our monies worth out of that, so it's scheduled for replacement. Then lastly, we, we keep trying to abscond the police department's message boards, but, you know, they're using them all the time for traffic calming. So, I think we're at a point with the construction projects we have that we need to get our own. So, that trailer or message board trailer also have speed feedback capabilities. If we need to go out and need to do our own speed study independent of the police, we'll be able to do that as well. Any questions?
So, I have, just have a question. So, you, the, the truck, oh, sorry, the original truck that you didn't purchase last year, we had 39,000 for it and you're going to reevaluate it again this year, does that mean that there, where did the other, where did the, the money that you didn't go?
So, that, that, the money we had for this year.
Right.
Went back to the equipment reserve fund.
Okay. And will that happen again? So, we're putting another 39,000 aside?
Yep.
And you'll move it to the reserve fund for equipment?
If, if we don't use it again for this year, correct.
Okay, so there'll be $80,000.
Correct.
Okay. Do you know how much money is in the equipment reserve?
I don't off the top of my head. Zach probably knows.
So, our equipment reserve fund is multiple, so it's public, it's all of our equipment. So, that total fund is 1.8 million and that covers public, public safety, uh, public safety, I'm sorry, public services, communications, EMS, it's all the equipment. It's all in one fund.
Right.
So, if, so when John said it goes to the reserve balance.
Mm-hmm.
If we have overages on another piece of equipment because we've underbudged it, it allows us the flexibility to purchase, still purchase the equipment and keep money in the account because there are unforeseen expenditures that come up throughout the year, whether it's repairs, maintenance, or we go to purchase and prices go up unexpectedly. Without that reserve, you know, it gives us the flexibility to be able to purchase without having to come back to the council. Because it's a multi-year fund, it's, the appropriation, if it's not used, stays in the fund until there's some action towards that.
I understand.
Okay, good.
I'm just, so I'm just curious why you would put aside the same amount of fund, funding the exact amount again? When you put 39,000 last year and you didn't use it, why would you come back and ask for another 30,000? Maybe you would just say, we only need 15 because we put 39 away last year? Just saving the, why would we put the same amount of money twice we didn't use it the first time?
Right, and it, that's correct. Also, John has, his equipment is very substantial.
Yeah.
And because we're budgeting them so far out, six years from now, prices could, could be substantially different. So, that truck that we're estimating today is 200,000, could be 275 six years from now, depending on what's happening in the market at that time. So, some of this is to, you know, help with, by not reducing the appropriation or moving it somewhere else. It's used to also help us try to bridge that gap over a six-year period because, you know, there's so much unknown during that time, especially on these type of pieces of equipment. And if we do move towards, you know, electric is very expensive. If we start going towards that, you know, there's a lot of things that come into play, including inflation on, on getting these types. And the lead time to get these are so long that, that can drive costs too because everyone's trying to get them, you know, every municipality is trying to get these type pieces of equipment at the same time. And there's only a handful of vendors that provide these. So, we can reduce the appropriation if that's, if that's necessary, but some of, some of the thought process behind that was if we leave the appropriation in there, we've given ourselves flexibility over the long term, hoping that we wouldn't have to come back in the future years and ask for an additional appropriation. So, trying to put some of the money, leave the money in the reserve account today, put that in. If John reassesses and decides whether he needs the truck or not in 2023, we could come back and reassign that appropriation towards another piece of equipment with the council's approval, depending on, or we could move it back to the general fund. There's, we have a number of options that, you know, that can take, that can be triggered depending on what the needs are.
I think what we're trying to avoid is that when we have a catastrophic failure, we've had those in the past, if, if it wasn't in that year budget and then we're behind the eight wall. So, we, we try to fund to stay ahead of that situation. So, when we do have a catastrophic failure and they do occur, we've got the cash to make the purchase.
I understand, thank you.
Uh, John, I see on the road reconstruction and pavement overlay projects, you have 500,000 listed as to-be-determined projects based on bond funding. Can you just talk about that a little bit and what are some potential areas that we could allocate that funding toward? I know we've talked a little bit about Dam Street potentially.
So, half a million dollars sounds like a lot of money, but it's really not. It gets us about a mile worth of road. So, let me go to my six-year tip. So, not for the upcoming year, but the following year, we have in, uh, looks like Robinson Street, Columbia Street, Liberty Lane from Route 138 to the bike path, James Trail. So, we could accelerate any of those roads? What I will say, we did analysis on Dam Street, it's about $100,000 to do that street. But the thing I want to point out is there are a number of streets other than Dam Street that are in far worse condition. We've got Quagmud. We had some flooding on Robinson Street that occurs during these anomaly events. Central Street, Woodbine, there's other roads in town that have far worse flooding than, than Dam Street did. And again, that flooding that occurred was during this anomaly event that I guess, you know, they are, seem to be more frequent, but I don't know if we can design a solution for that. So, I mean, that's, that's up to the council and if the bond, if, you know, if we do get that money, you know, we can try to put that elsewhere.
Your recommendation would be the streets that you just mentioned there that are number?
I mean, I would try to accelerate what we have in the pipeline now.
Yep.
And then that just pushes, you know, what happens is when we fit Dam Street or Central Street or Robinson Street, it's going to pull them in quicker, maybe in year four, year five, but we can just try to move everything up by a year is what we essentially try to do.
I want to ask you a little bit about the extension of the seawall in Mattoonik.
Yep.
I know at one point in time, we were in negotiations for the sale of town land in exchange for cash proceeds and in addition to that consideration would be monies contributed toward the material for the wall. I don't remember that transaction being completed. Is that still in the works?
That's correct. I don't want to speak for Mike or Sillow, but I believe Mike has reached out to Mr. Finnegan's attorney to try to move that along and there's been no movement, so.
At this point, we're moving forward without that agreement?
That's correct.
Got it.
We need to get our wall built because again, our wall is designed to perform much differently than what Mr. Finnegan was proposing to rebuild the Relic wall.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, John.
I just want to recognize Paul Ferrandy, Highway Superintendent. Paul is retiring and his last day is Friday after 16 years. So, I wanted to thank Paul for all his hard work.
Congratulations.
Next, we have public safety. Chief, do you come up?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, so, our public safety program that we're asking funding for is, we're asking for $80,000 for fiscal year 22, 23 to be spread across four individual programs. First program we have is the public safety computer system.
Just, uh, just move that microphone as close as possible.
I'm sorry. The first program is the public safety computer The first program is the public safety computer system program that we have. What we're asking for is funding in the amount of $15,000 be put towards that. Our next major program that is scheduled for, to come out of that, is the server virtualization hardware replacement. Uh, it's an upgrade, the servers run all over our computers at the police station, so it's important to do that. Uh, the estimated cost, or projected cost for that in 2223 is $50,000. So the $15,000 that goes in this year is going to go to that fund, and we have several other programs over the next couple of years that will need to pull money out of this funding, specifically for cybersecurity, other servers, firewall, et cetera. Uh, it's very important in this day and age that we protect our data, so we need to make sure that we have the money set aside that can maintain the programs that we need, and working with Lori Fox to do that. The next program that we're requesting funding for is the communications equipment. We're asking for 30,000 for this next fiscal year. What that really makes up is all of our CC, closed caption TV around the building, our workstations and dispatch, EMS, that handle EMS, police and fire, backup recording systems for our rate, uh, excuse me, for our telephone systems, in-station telephone systems, and the monitoring equipment for the town's fire alarms. So we're looking for a total of $30,000 to be put towards that. The next major expense is scheduled for 2324, and that's going to be for the telephone system replacement in the station, and that's slated for $50,000. The next program we're asking for funding for is the public safety building general maintenance fund. We're asking for $10,000 for that, and basically, that fund is, reserve fund is there for any maintenance or repairs that need to be done on our public safety building. The next major scheduled repair is going to be on the roof of the building. We're at 23 years of age, so we're going to need to put a new roof on there soon. And the last program, which is, we're asking funding for, is our animal control vehicle replacement. We're asking for, this is a two-year cycle program, we're asking for $25,000 fiscal year 2223, an additional 25,000 for 2324, to replace the existing 2016 Chevy van that we have now. By 2024, it's going to be pretty beat on, pretty used, it's used daily, it's used sometimes seven days a week, and it gets, bringing all animals in and out of it, so it needs to be replaced, as well as the cages and things inside also will need to be replaced. So as I said, there's four programs we're asking funding for, for a total of 80,000, and those are the four programs.
Chief, any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have EMS, Chief Stanley.
Uh, our program for capital budget for our service delivery now is replacing one of our EMS ambulances that we have, and this is for, for next year, 49,000 in the next fiscal year for that. This is a pay-as-you-go as we move along. That unit has 111,000 miles on it. As we've increased in volume, obviously, our, our demand on the unit has increased. To give you a comparative, our 2012 reserve is now hitting 110,000 in this one, and approaching four years is 111. So that kind of gives you a perspective. We can go to our next. And the other part of the program we're replacing is cardiac monitor defibrillator and a stretcher. The life cycle, we have three front lines, so next year will be the final year, we'll have all of our units replaced, and we'll be looking to replace those for probably another seven years. And then we have one more stretcher to replace next year, and that will complete that replacement as far as the medical equipment, which is fairly expensive, but we need to have equipment that works, if it comes in handy. Then our next thing, I think, was a floor on there, if you go back? Yeah, um, at the north station at the public safety building, in our section of the building of the EMS station, we have a floor that's in there that has significant cracks that needs to be replaced, we estimate a cost of 20,000. Our concern is bacteria in there, as you can imagine, paramedics or shoes step into things that aren't very pleasant, so, and we have significant cracks, so we're looking to replace that. And that's our program.
You, chief, any questions? All right, very good.
Uh, this is a, a big ticket item here, I have one project going on, and it's vehicle replacement. I'm asking for $16,000, this will be the second year of multiple year funding for a replacement of the Equinox that we currently use.
All right, any questions for Lance? All right, thank you, Lance.
Lance, quick question for you.
Yeah.
See the communications tower, the expenses there, the 2.2 million, when will allocation of those expenses be made and begin, like, construction of that?
Well, we're planning on having a kickoff meeting at the end of next week.
Oh, that's great.
Waiting on a few insurance paperwork deals to go through, but hopefully the kickoff meeting will have a start date after that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lance. Next, we have Laurel Clark, our library director.
We are asking for a total of $45,000 for the next fiscal year. That includes four projects, which would be electronic building access, that's the full amount, $20,000 estimate, and then multi-year funding for roof replacement at Peastale, Kingston, and then parking improvement, multi-year funding, $5,000 for each in the first year. I'm sorry, no, 15 for the parking improvement, for a six-year total with a target of $90,000. And that's just to be proactive, there's-
I got a question for you, Laurel.
Sure.
See, part of the monies here asks for the parking improvements, it says, uh, essential acquisition of neighboring land, it says in here, I believe? Could you just sort of walk us through that? Is, is part of the adjacent land privately owned, and we already believe that they will sell it to us?
No, it's, it's to be proactive, so it's, it's if that happens, but that's not something that's in the immediate pipeline.
Something sort of like a cushion there that will hold for fall, that we can sort of negotiate?
Right, yeah, we don't want to be, if the opportunity does present itself, we don't want to be without the funds.
Yep. Thank you.
And Laurel, correct me if I'm wrong, but there have been, in the past, some high-level discussions of that-
There have.
Potential, okay.
There have. Never say never.
Hi, I just have a question regarding Peastale roof replacement. You have year one, looking for $5,000 for a total cost of $100,000. How are we going to get to the 100,000?
So it's four-year funding-
Right.
-but there's also opportunity to use grant funding, so we would ask Champlin to help us with some of that funding.
Just didn't seem like enough to me, to be asking year one for $5,000 on a $100,000 cost.
Correct me if, 100,000 was for all the various roofs, and 50,000 is for-
Peastale is 100,000.
Okay.
Yeah, right? Kingston is 50.
It says in your report.
Yes, no, I, no, I understand.
Peastale itself at 100,000, and only a $5,000 request-
For four-year funding.
-to get to that 100,000.
Right.
I'm just asking, how are we going to do this?
We would have to ask for additional funding from Champlin, or some other grant funding, unless that's a mistake, I, I-
So the, it says 100,000 on this side, and the next side was 50,000, is it a different library? I was just, okay.
Kingston is 50, Peastale is 100.
Okay, got it.
I mean, they, they all are substantial costs-
True.
...not allocating a lot of money right now towards them, which makes me a little bit-
Oh, I understand.
Uh, Zach, so a quick question for you. Since it appears that there are a need for roof replacements at these respective libraries, do you believe, as finance director, it would make sense to allocate more monies upfront toward that, toward the six-year plan here?
I don't at this time, right now, because we have been very successful in the past in receiving funding from Champlin, and we believe these projects would be eligible, so I'd like to see where that funding comes in first, then we can reassess, and by the time all that takes place, we'll be, you know, we'll be through the next fiscal year. So I think it's prudent to wait now, which is why we did not put more money upfront till we see that application process go through, what we'll actually receive. Then, in next year's CIP, you'll probably see something, because we'll have more realistic estimates, and then we'll know where the grant funding is sitting at that time, and if we need additional funding, we'd come back and make that request then.
Great, thank you.
That was my question, too, the math didn't divide up over six years.
Yeah, no, sorry about that.
You know, I kept saying, well, six times 15 is 90.
I had, I had originally put in, like, I believe it was 20, and it was moved down because we knew that Champlin has been so generous to us with these capital improvements in the past. I apologize.
Just a quick question, Laurel, do you write the grants? Are you the grant writer for those, for those projects?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Champlin.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel.
Now we have IT, Lori Ann Fox. Feeling in as camera person tonight, too. Thank you for that.
My retirement plan. Good evening, thank you for having me. IT is requesting for one project in the amount of $50,000. It's a continuation, last fiscal year, you approved some money towards network upgrades, so this will cover our, our infrastructure for switches and firewalls that basically connect all the town's locations, back to Town Hall for internet and software services. Actually, as part of this, we're, we're adding redundancy for firewalls, right now is a single point of failure, and it's a best practice to have dual firewall, so we are adding that in as well.
Questions on this one?
All right, thank you.
We could have Jamie Rabbit planning?
I want to say relatively simple request on the capital side from the planning department. Total request for 30,000, it's regarding study monies. I will note that, if you look at the top of project descriptions, there's two categories, land use regulations update of 7,500, housing initiatives of 22.5, and then in the table below, you'll see development of the regs, and then design guidelines for a total of 30. The housing initiative, in essence, is a component of the development of design guidelines, and those funds are, from my perspective, almost interchangeable with regards to developing and analysis and development of, of regulations and guidelines. So if someone sees there's a slight reference issue, I hope everyone understands that.
Any questions for Jamie?
I had, I had a question earlier about the fair share fees, because you talk about open space, but didn't half of the fair share fees also go to affordable housing? So my question would be, why wouldn't we use, if that money hasn't been spent and allocated in that way, why wouldn't we use it to fund this rather than to put it into the CIP?
I think you're thinking of the real estate transfer conveyance fees, not the-
Is that different than the fair share fees?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. So the fair share fees are not the real estate fees? Right, was it, what, was that the word?
Yeah, the real estate conveyance.
Real estate conveyance. So why wouldn't we use that, then?
Again, that's a fiscal decision by the finance department. Again, our department had a request for the funds, we thought it would be appropriate in the CIP plan. We actually had additional funds in last year's SIP plan that would become available this year, but working with, with Zach and Terry, they were able to find some operational monies that would replace SIP money in this coming fiscal year, as well as the existing fiscal year. We're also hopeful that we may get that grant from Rhode Island Commerce, which then would make this funding request potentially moot, but we can't rely on that grant application of 125,000.
I thought, at that meeting a couple weeks ago, you had 25,000 in your budget, and you were going to use it.
We have $25,000 to help supplement that grant request of 125 for a total of 150. Again, if those, if that 125 doesn't become available from Rhode Island Commerce, the 25,000 exists within the planning department's operational budget. We would combine that with the 22.5 that you see on the screen, and then begin that program in this fiscal year, move it into next fiscal year, being July 1, and then continue that into the following fiscal year. Again, we'd have to spread that project over, in essence, an 18-month period, which would spread over, in essence, three fiscal years. The grant from Rhode Island Commerce would allow us to expedite the design guidelines and regulatory changes. Deb, I hope, I hope that answers your question.
Just trying to process it all, because it sounds like money is coming from here, then you found money from over here, and this is going to expedite it, so I'm just trying to sort it all through.
So Jamie, just to understand this, these monies allocated here are going to go toward external experts for this service, is that-
We would bring on, we would do either an RFP or an RFQ for consulting services to assist the department in devaluation and potential revisions to the regulations, as well as the development of design guidelines.
And any amounts received from the Commerce grants would reduce dollar-for-dollar or anything requested here?
It could reduce the need to utilize these funds, yes.
Yes?
It could, yes.
Thank you.
Again, if I'm receiving 125,000 from Rhode Island Commerce to develop design guidelines, I don't necessarily need the 22.5 out of the capital program.
So in other words, if we receive monies in excess, either at or in excess of 30,000 from the RI Commerce grant, that, the money received from the grant would be used toward the service identified on this slide?
If we were seeing, and again, I'm trying to understand, if we received the Rhode Island Commerce grant, that 22.5 on the development of design guidelines could, in essence, go back to the municipality for either a future funding endeavor from the planning department, or become available to other SIP programs.
That's it, thank you.
Any other questions for Jamie? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Liz Monte, our tax assessor. And I'm not sure, but this may be the first time I've introduced you all to Liz. Liz started in October, I think.
November twenty-second.
November.
Good evening, it's nice to meet you all.
Please put the microphone as close as possible.
Okay, Assessment is seeking thirty thousand dollars for a future property appraisal program. As you know, we're in full revaluation right now. The revaluation schedule for each city and town in Rhode Island is dictated by the state law. So it's a nine-year cycle, three, three, and three. So since we're having full revow this year, that's usually the most expensive, and that's already in the works. We will go into a statistical revaluation for the period ending December thirty-one of 2024. And what happens with statistical, the state will reimburse the towns, and it's usually about sixty percent. So we just try to make up a buffer, and that buffer for the CIP request would be thirty thousand at this time for next year.
All right, thank you.
Okay. And I'd also like to echo John Schock's gratitude in gratitude for Patricia Northup, who's retiring from the assessor's office after twenty years of service. We appreciate her service.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mark Russo, Facilities Superintendent.
Good evening. So the total ask for capital improvements is sixty-nine thousand five hundred for the Town Hall. The first item is the aluminum window replacement, the second floor in the Human Resources Office. They were installed in nineteen eighty-nine, and they are not very efficient. The second one is a hot issue, and that would be the air conditioning for the council chambers. We moved that forward. We're supposed to go out another year, but we figured we'd get it done because it gets so warm in here, as you know. So that was forty-five thousand that we should give us, that's the second-year funding for that. The next item would be the repair to the High Street entrance. The roof is deteriorated, water leaks through, gets on the front doors, and the doors are, were installed in eighteen seventy-seven, so we want to renovate those. We've also asked for ten thousand dollars for the South Road building, just so we have a capital reserve there for repairs. And then with the equipment, with the security and surveillance system upgrades, as the system has become obsolete, we're also working with IT to do a migration to a cloud-based system. So this is every two years, we're asking for, for this capital improvement. The last item is the pickup truck and the articulating boom lift. The pickup truck is an additional truck to the one we have now, is in snow events. I'm constantly asking Paul for a pickup truck to take care of all the parking lots. And the boom lift is a piece of equipment that we will use townwide, not just for facilities, but for parks, for public works. And it is a hybrid unit, so it has a diesel generator to supply electricity, so we can use it indoors, namely the rec center, because we cannot reach the ceiling in that building. And there's a lot of equipment up there, so.
Any questions?
I have one question, Mark. The HVAC for this room, air filtration involved in that at all? Because we know this is not as effective as it could be if we had air replacement, air filtration. Being an HVAC novice, I'm just asking if that's part of the plan?
The, part of the plan for those, it's a mini-split system, so it's filters that are inside the units themselves. One would sit here, and one would sit on the other side. And it's a heat pump, so we could use it in the, in the winter as well for heat and the air conditioning. So other than that, the only thing we have is the exhaust fan.
So this doesn't address air quality?
No, it does not. Just, just that, that the filters themselves.
And have you looked at any electric vehicles at all? Has anyone investigated the cost?
We have...
Light-duty kind of pickup trucks?
I have not looked at those yet. I know that the cost of those are astronomical. We do have the infrastructure here at Town Hall that we could, you know, plug it in and charge it. But no, I haven't, I haven't, the electric vehicle would be good to, for, like, a building inspector or somebody like that, but for a utility vehicle to plow snow, you know, move furniture, things like that, it just, it's not, it's not practical for that type of work.
Thank you.
So just to, just to clarify, just so I understand it, so the pickup truck is so that you're, you or your division will be able to plow the town parking lots instead of borrowing one from highway and then plowing the town?
Correct.
Perfect, that's great. And then, can I ask a question about South Road, Terry? The school, I didn't anticipate that it would be so busy and heavily used at this juncture two years later, but is there any extension of the lease coming? I know it's not related to Mark, but...
It is kind of, because Mark's been involved with the lease agreement, but it has been extended through the month of March. That was recently approved by the council. So that is the latest that we have on that particular lease. It may very well be that that could be extended further, which would help us really maintain and sustain the building operational costs. But the, the investment for the school is necessary if and when we ever get to a point where we, the town decides to, to sell it, if that, if that comes to be.
Thank you. Great, thanks, Mark.
Next, we have Senior Services, Sue Damasi.
Hi. Senior Services is asking funding for two projects this year. The first is new, it's a Facility Equipment Improvement Fund for ten thousand dollars. Our kitchen, in particular, our equipment is twenty-one, twenty-two years old and has been requiring a lot of repair lately, between dishwasher, gas stoves, walk-in refrigerators, freezers, convection ovens, steam tables. This would give us a yearly addition to help with those costs of repair and/or replacement as needed. The second request is for forty thousand dollars to be put towards a multiple-year for a new van. Right now, we have a two thousand and three van that we use as a backup to our two thousand and eleven. These are requiring lots and lots of repairs lately. What we would do is change the two thousand and eleven van to be the backup van and get a new van. We've looked into perhaps a smaller van, but with guidance from our, our driver, who is retired, Ripta. They don't have the lifts that we require, and we do have a lot of people that need the lift, either because they can't do the stairs or they're in a wheelchair or walker. So for the safety and just the continuity of services, that's our second ask. Any questions? Thank you.
Next, we have the Neighborhood Guild. I can handle this one. Been involved for a long time with trying to get, move this project forward. The council knows that this has been a long-term project in the capital program for a long time, with that million-dollar bond waiting there for major infrastructure improvements. So this is twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three is the year. We've got the bond funding approved, and we have a number of elements to the improvements for the Neighborhood Guild, which you can see here. The main entrance alcove, window replacement, HVAC, major upgrades, roof replacement, fire protection, fire alarm, and mechanical and electrical improvements, and if there's anything left, interior restoration. So, so we're hopeful, we did have a, this is some of the, more of the detail on each element, but we did have a probable cost estimate done by an engineering firm a couple of years ago. So we do have some pretty firm recommendation and numbers to be able to move forward with bid specifications, hopefully in twenty-two, twenty-three, to get this project. This is a major, major infrastructure project for that beautiful old building that gets well-used by town residents. And we're hoping we can also have whoever comes in take a look at the basement level of the building as well, where there's locker rooms and saunas, but that have gone unused since the start of the pandemic, and there's, there's not a high demand for that type of thing any longer at the guild because of the rec center coming into play. So that's the Neighborhood Guild long-term project. Are there any questions?
Terry, I just got a quick question about the Neighborhood Guild Trust Fund. Is that a fund that is held separate from the town?
Yes, it is, yep. It's held separate from the town. It's a, an endowment, and the guild operations is funded through investment income on that endowment, and there are no tax dollars involved with that, the operation of the guild program.
And that fund will fully pay for the debt service costs related to this, all the...
Debt service will be paid through the guild investment.
That's great.
Should have mentioned that, that's a bonus. Next, we have the water program, and we'll call on, John gets to come back for a second time.
Again, so the council may recall, we awarded a contract to Dixon Engineering to look at the anchor bolts at both of the water tanks. They're a special, it's a specialty service, and coincidentally got the preliminary report back today as to what needs to be done. The, the good news is, the engineer's estimate is, at least if their estimate is correct when it comes to construction, is going to be less than what we anticipated. So I'm hoping that we won't use much of what we're looking for for next year, which is good news.
John, can you push the microphone a little closer? Or speak a little louder? Thank you.
So, so what I'm hoping is that, you know, what, the additional funding that we're asking for for next year may not be needed. We probably need a little bit of it, but I don't envision a hundred thousand dollars. So that, that project's progressing. We've got to get the design finished now for the remedial anchor bolt repairs. Second item is, we, we're on a process now for every two years of power washing the exterior of the water tanks, believe it or not. Back when we had exterior paint, when it was lead-based, we didn't get mildew growing. I guess mildew doesn't like the lead either. So after we, we blasted and repainted the tanks with a two-polyurethane system, now we get mildew. So this is to do both tanks, believe it or not, Victoria Lane tank. The contractors that we've had say it's the highest tank they've dealt with in the country, believe it or not, from the ground elevation to the top. That's why you see it's forty-two thousand dollars compared to fifteen thousand for Mortucket. We also need to put standby generators in. We've got skater at all our major infrastructures, so we need to put a standby generator in at Victoria Lane, because we have a, a skater system there that, there's a floats in the tank that tells us when to open an altitude valve for the interconnect. And the same goes for, we have the interconnect near South County Hills with Suez, we need one there, and another one at Factory Pond where the main skater system is. We, we have been working with Lance and the Communications Department to have one generator at Mortucket for their equipment and for our skater system at Mortucket as well. So rather than having two generators, we're going to have one generator, we'll share that generator with both departments. We think we, we were, and if the council recalls, we were having a number of coliform hits, not, not fecal coliform, but total coliform, down in the Green Hill area next to the Mortucket water tank. And Brett Whaley, I think, finally figured out what the cause was. So we were keeping reserve money every year for, if we need to do additional water quality assessments. I think we've got that problem solved, so hopefully we won't need that money. And then we're required by state law to do three plans that are submitted to the Water Resources Board and the Department of Health. The first is a capital infrastructure plan, which is essentially the same as our capital budget, but they want it in a different format. That's required every five years. And we're also required to do a vulnerability assessment of our infrastructure. It really doesn't change. The most vulnerable section of capital, of infrastructure was the Barrier Beach Main from East Mattoonik to Mattoonik, and we solved that problem once we constructed the water main along Route One north of Potter's Pond. So, I mean, we don't add new infrastructure, so it's really just, you know, refreshing that plan every five years to comply with the state law. And then finally, we have the Water Supply Management Plan, which is a five-year update. And that's kind of like, I guess, the facilities plan, for lack of better terms. We've got a pretty good handle internally on what we need to do, but this, again, is, it's for the regulators to look at and, and present to them, and it's due for an update in the next fiscal year. And that's a summary. The only thing I just want to add is, is that the water fund, it's enterprise fund, there are no tax dollars that goes towards the water utility. All the user fees go to pay for any expenditures we have, and we also have no debt service. The debt service was retired on that system many years ago. Waste water, again, similar to water, it's an enterprise fund. The rate payers pay for the expenditures we, we need to run the system. And it's also a regional system. South Kingston is the managing regional partner with the University of Rhode Island and the Town of Narragansett. The Town of Narragansett flow we receive is essentially from the pier north to North Kingston. The council may recall this, there's also the Scarborough Plant, Narragansett runs that, and that essentially handles the, the Galilee area of Narragansett and the surrounding areas there. So whenever we do capital improvements for wastewater, we have to apportion the cost based upon who's getting the benefit of it. So for example, if it's an improvement at the treatment plant, it's split by all three regional partners based on flow. If it's an improvement at Silver Lake Pump Station, only URI and South Kingston come through, that is basically a sixty-forty split, or a seventy, thirty, seventy South Kingston, thirty percent URI. And then conversely, for Kingston Pump Station, eighty percent of the flow that goes through Kingston is university's twenty percents to town. So again, depending where that capital project is, we apportion the cost based upon the regional partner flow that's contributing to the, to the facility in question. So the first item is, we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for our skater system. It was originally installed in eighteen years ago. We have made some upgrades since then, but we're now at a point where we really need to replace the whole system, plus what we call PLCs, or programmable logic controllers. These are, I guess, for lack of better terms, mini-computers in, like, the return sludge building, in the sludge area. So those are kind of like stand-alones, but they send skater information back to the mainframe. Those have to be replaced as well. skater information back to the mainframe. Those have to be replaced as well. And again, we use, again, because that's at the treatment plant, 40% of the flow that comes to the plant is South Kingston, so we own 40% of that cost. Next one is Silver Lake Pump Station. We have macerators at the larger facilities, and what that essentially is, it grinds any debris that's in the effluent. I mean, sometimes we'll find a two-by-four in the sewer collection system. So rather than that two-by-four getting in and damaging the pumps, these macerators are heavy industrial macerators that will shred any material like that before it gets to the pumps. And again, 72% of the flow through Silver Lake is ours, so we will pay 72% of that cost. Kingston Pump Station, I actually had an error in the budget, but we corrected it on the slide. So we have a chemical tank that we inject the proprietary chemical. It's a bioxide for odor control, which also reduces the corrosiveness of the wastewater. We injected it at Kingston because it's the furthest point away from the interceptor, but we actually should have assigned it to Silver Lake Pump Station, even though the tank is at Kingston, because it serves a whole benefit to the entire interceptor. So we corrected it here, and we're showing Silver Lake flow for that tank at $36,000. Next item is sludge pump replacement, waste-activated sludge pumps, one of the many pumps at the, at the wastewater plant that Kathy and her staff have to deal with. Again, it's at the plant, so we use regional plant flows, 40% of the cost is South Kingston. The other thing I want to mention is, we're very fortunate. Kathy has a staff that, we do a lot of work in-house, a lot of places. We'll farm out the work. I mean, this is not an easy job doing this pump replacement, but we do it in-house with our staff. They're very talented. It's very heavy pieces of equipment. It's very technical, but we've, we've had good luck over the years, and we'll continue in that manner. Some stuff is, is beyond our capabilities. Right now, we're on a big construction project for a new dewatering belt and new septicage equipment. That, that we contracted out, if the council recalls. So where we can, we try to do work in-house, but sometimes because of the size of it and the complexity, we do have to farm it out. Next item is septicage holding tank. So we currently have two means of disposing of dewatered solids. One is through Sinagro, which runs the former Wind Socket incinerator. They incinerate liquid sludge, and then the ash is disposed of at the landfill. The other means is, we've had a belt filter press for many years. That press is being replaced right now with a screw press, which is going to get us a drier solid cake content, which equates to less disposal cost. But this tank is to hold the dewatered sludge that's sent for incineration. So we, we process it during the day, and then Sinagro is there, you know, two, sometimes three times a week, in addition to what we're taking to the landfill with the dewatered sludge. So again, because this is at the plant, 40% of the flow is ours, so 40% of the cost is ours as well. And then finally, this is the interceptor. So the interceptor is our large diameter, the spine, if you will, of the collection system, which runs from essentially in front of Kingston Congregational Church down 138 to 108, comes all the way down 108, and then cuts through the Palisades property, and then it runs along the west side of the Sagatucket River, and then eventually cuts through the Muse Park lot, and then goes underneath Sagatucket River, and then on the east side to the Silver Lake Pump Station. So because that line is larger diameter, we have less chance of blockages, but we do periodically have to inspect it, and if we need to make repairs, we need to do that as well. So this is the third year of funding for that, and because it is the interceptor, we use Silver Lake Pump Station cost apportionment, which is 72% of the cost. So we already have the engineering done for that. So as soon as we get the third year of funding, we should be going out to bid to get that work done. And then lastly, we've got a pretty old Yanmar tractor, I mean, 1980s. So, I mean, it's been around a while. It's, it's served this purpose, and we need to replace it. That's basically the tractor we use for grounds upkeep down at the treatment plant, which is a pretty large parcel. And also for any miscellaneous towing that we have to do down there, that we use that tractor as well. So again, because it's at the plant, 40% of the flow is South Kingston, so 40% of the cost would be South Kingston's.
John, any questions?
John, I just got a quick question for you on the sludge pump replacement here.
Yep.
You got it listed as an in-kind replacement by the original manufacturer.
Yep.
Does that mean they're going to do it at a reduced cost?
No.
Or their services?
Here's the problem. When we replace pumps, you know, we've got pretty large diameter pipes, flange fittings, bolted connections. If we go to a different manufacturer, those face-to-face flan dimensions, they don't want it. So then we get into, it starts snowball. We've got to start replacing piping and isolation valves. So we do try to work with that vendor and say, hey, you know, we've had your pump for 20 years. We're happy with it. We will go out and likely bid it, but we're hoping that, we've got a pretty good recall with the manufacturers, that they give us favorable pricing. That's not to say they're gonna. If the price comes in outrageous, then at that point, we'd probably regroup and say, well, maybe we need to look at replacing 20 feet of pipe and isolation valves in addition to the pump. But to date, we've had pretty good luck. We've had these replacement in kinds that the manufacturers are good about, you know, trying to give us favorable pricing when we've got to replace the item.
This is like a below fair market value cost based on a long-term relationship we've had with the manufacturer?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Rory?
This is like a below fair market value cost for such a replacement based on?
Yeah, I don't know if it's a below fair market cost, but it's, it's a reasonable price. We've, we've had to do these in the past with other pumps. I'm going to say I feel pretty confident that we're given, we're not being taken advantage of, because it's, I mean, they could say, well, we know the town needs this pump, or they're going to get into piping. That doesn't happen. I mean, they're, they're pretty good about, all the manufacturers, about giving us favorable pricing, so we don't have to go that route. So that has never been a problem to date, and I'm hoping that it isn't in the future as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
John, and I think that brings us to the end of the presentation tonight. Anything else, Terry?
I'd like to thank the department heads and the division heads for their hard work in compiling the, the proposed budget this evening. I'd like to thank our finance director, Zach Saul, for also doing the heavy lifting on preparing a lot of the document that you see in front of you. What's next? Tomorrow night is the, is another work session with the school department. And then on January 24th, there is the Capital Improvement Program Public Hearing and Adoption scheduled for that, that evening, unless the council has any questions.
Very good. Well, thank you all for coming. Thank you for the presentations, everyone. It's always great to see, you know, what big projects are coming up on the horizon. A lot of exciting stuff. And yeah, have a good night.